Thanks, Andrew. There's no way I'll get that done.
I saw that the other day, I was like, mm.
Okay, I'm ready, Danny.
You're ready?
Yep, I am.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I don't know if this is the beginning of early voting and Barb decided to punish you all and have you come and watch a board meeting, but we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. We'll start off with any public comment and just a FYI, public comment for this does not intend for the moratorium portion, which will come later. So is there any public comments today? That is a record for the large public that we have, so. All right, moving on. Looking for a move on the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the agenda for today. Is there any changes?
No changes.
With no changes.
I will second that.
All right, moved by Steve, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda. Andrew, can you walk us through that?
Yes, be happy to. So today on the consent agenda, we have approval of the January 16th board meeting minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable, approval of Darwin Rod and Gun Club temporary on sale liquor license, approval of a tobacco license renewal for Valley and Company, approval of the 2023 gravel tax distribution, approval of the purchase of firearms and optics for handguns and long guns, approval of tower lease agreements and amendments, a resolution authorizing the Public Land Survey System Monument Grant Program, application for that. And that is the consent agenda.
All right, with that said, any questions on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I will move the consent agenda.
All right, moved by Beth.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? No, there's a resolution involved there then? Do we need to walk through that then?
Yes.
Commissioner Oberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shieffelbain?
Yes. And with that, looking for approval of the rest of the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next up, Greg Schultz.
So Danny, you want to take it?
Okay.
Since we're doing the public hearing, so.
All right, so. Today, I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearing about the proposed moratorium and the large solar energy and wind energy conversion systems. The proposed moratorium would place a hold on zoning applications for these facilities while the Planning Commission works to complete its recommendations for the updates to the county's zoning regulations. This would not prohibit the future development of large solar systems or wind energy systems, but ensure that reasonable regulations are in place to protect the interests of neighboring property owners. We'll take this matter in the following order. First, Andrew will go over the whys and what about the moratorium with a brief overview of the proposed ordinance. Then we will seek public comment from you. And then finally, we'll close the public hearing and we'll seek comment from my fellow commissioners. As a reminder during the public hearing, we request that anyone choosing to speak limit their comments to three minutes, remain respectful, and keep their comments to the issue at hand. Before making comments, if you could please state your name and where you reside for the record. And finally, the purpose of the hearing is for the commissioners to hear your comments and it is not dialogue. We may not respond directly to your comments or questions. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the county board may choose to adopt the proposed ordinance, reject the proposed ordinance, or table the proposed ordinance to a future date or table with direction to amend the language and ordinance. Now with that said, we're going to follow the kind of the public hearing agenda that Andrew kind of set. And next, if Andrew could go through kind of the reasons why we're doing the moratorium and what a moratorium means for Meeker County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So prior to the start of the discussion today, I want to take a moment to make sure we're all on the same page with the item that's on the table. The purpose of the public hearing is, as our chair said, is to receive public comments regarding the proposed moratorium on large solar energy systems and wind energy conversion systems. These systems are generally defined as having a capacity of greater than 100 kilowatts. And this is not intended to affect small systems that are for individual use, so a single solar panel that is on a single home or on a building. If the ordinance were approved, it would mean that applications for these new large systems would not be processed until either the county completes its review of its ordinances relating to these facilities or until one year from the date of the ordinance passage, the moratorium ordinance, unless the board finds it necessary to extend the moratorium beyond that. However, based on the work of the Planning Commission's already done, it's anticipated that the recommendations for updating the ordinance will be presented to the county board well within a year. The purpose of the moratorium is to ensure that the county board and its planning commission have adequate time to properly consider changes to the ordinances regulating these facilities without the pressure of pending applications. The draft ordinance that was included in the packet outlines the conditions necessary for moratorium to be put in place, namely that a temporary ordinance is necessary so that the county has time to hold discussions and hearings on whether changes should be made to the county's existing ordinances regulating these facilities. All of the county's zoning ordinances, including the ordinances regulating these facilities, are intended to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Meeker County. This notion of protecting health, safety, and welfare is the standard by which local governments across the state have authority to implement zoning regulations. It's not unique to solar energy systems or wind energy conversion systems. Additionally, it's the standard that was used for various other county ordinances. The draft ordinance also notes that an emergency exists based on recent development pressure and comments from the community. Development pressure is the result of the current electric transmission line that has been proposed by Excel Energy to run through Meeker County and the solicitation of private property owners by third parties for land for future solar and wind energy developments. The comments from the community are demonstrated at the last planning commission meeting during the public hearing on the conditional use permit for a solar energy system self Dassel. These comments resulted in additional conditions being placed on the permit. In addition, there have been phone calls to our planning and zoning department regarding the county's current zoning restrictions. And the scope of the inquiry was the 64,000 acres within Meeker County for a wind project. Granted, that project may not be managed by our local authority, but our zoning restrictions were the interest of the call. The county board may find it is in the interest of the county to adopt the proposed moratorium so that adequate time is available for the planning commission to consider and propose the updated regulations, which is intended to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Additionally, this will ensure the public has the opportunity to be heard on proposed regulations and applications will have a fair process by where the requirements that the county is seeking are known in advance of the applicant, uh, application being filed and before meeting with the planning commission. As a reminder, the purpose of the hearing is to discuss the moratorium and not propose changes to the zoning ordinance. A separate public hearing on that matter will be held by the planning commission at a future date will be properly noticed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. We're looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved by Paul. Right here, a second.
Also, go ahead, Beth.
Second.
Seconded by Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public, you have the floor. If someone wants to raise their hand, they can step forward to the microphone, state your name and where you're from, and we'll get this thing rolling. So, all right, go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Kristi Hagland, and I am a landowner and resident in Meeker County. This is my husband, Andy, and I'm here. We are some of the local owners of Adams Wind Generations in Cosmos, Minnesota. This is one of the wind farms that went into commercial operation in 2011. We are also corn and soybean farmers in southern Meeker County. We were fortunate to move back to the area in 2013 to farm with my parents. Having ownership in the wind farm made that transition back to the area a lot easier. We also have Danielson Wind Farms, and that's another wind farm in Cosmos. Blue Earth Renewables is Adams Wind Generations and Danielson Wind Farms partner in the business. We have invited them to work with us on a new wind project in the area in response to upcoming contract opportunities for cell transmissions. We are excited for local landowners to have the opportunity to partner with us in this project. It will provide local landowners additional passive income for their families and will also allow them to continue their farming operations on their land. Many of the landowners we have talked to about our project have expressed strong interest in the project thus far. We do not support the proposed moratorium because we believe the existing Meeker and Minnesota County, Meeker County and Minnesota permitting processes and regulations surrounding wind facilities are fair, reasonable, and consistent with what other counties and states across this country have done. We do not want any changes that would impact the new wind project we are working on or restrict landowners' rights on what they want to do with their land. So I guess that's my personal comments. And I might also like to introduce two representatives from Blue Earth Renewables that we're working with, Jason Edworthy and Aaron Van Derzen.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Jason Edworthy. I do not live in the county, I'm from Calgary, Alberta. I'm the Director of Community and Indigenous Affairs for Blue Earth Renewables, who owns along with these folks the Adams and Danielson Wind Facilities in Meeker County and pursuing to develop a new wind facility along with this group. As you can imagine, we are deeply concerned about the potential for a moratorium on wind development in Meeker County. We'd like to briefly discuss three points. First is the positive impact that a new project would have on the communities. The landowners who we work with here have been highly supportive and along with their neighbors are anticipating significant lease payments and, uh, over the course of the project. Our existing operating projects currently generate between 130,000 and 140,000 in tax revenue to Meeker County each year from the Minnesota Production Tax Credit, tax, sorry. The new facility we are working on could significantly increase that revenue, perhaps by as much as fivefold. These projects generate significant benefits to local contractors, suppliers, service providers, and generate jobs and income for the local community during construction and throughout the 30-year operating life. We currently employ five full-time workers at our existing facilities.
Hello, and I'm Aaron Van Derzen. I'm a developer with Blue Earth Renewables and lead developer for the new project we're pursuing in the county. I do not live in Meeker County, I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
We won't hold that against you. Much.
Yeah.
All right, I want to clarify that, so.
The second point we would like to make is that wind facilities are very compatible with agricultural uses of the land. Even the largest wind turbines only occupy a small fraction of the land, less than 1,000 square feet individually. Collector electrical lines are usually buried under the access road. Any damage to drain tile systems during construction is repaired and crop damages are reimbursed. Many of the activities that occurred on the land before wind facility was built can continue undisturbed after construction is completed. Farm equipment can be used right up to the base of the towers and livestock are, livestock on the lands, or our experience with livestock and lands with hundreds of turbines and scores of ranches is that cattle are completely unfazed by the machinery and often like to bed down in the shadow of the towers. Farmers have told us that they enjoy the long-term, stable revenue from posting wind turbines, and those revenues help in an industry that is always subject to varying weather and market conditions. The third point we'd like to make is that we develop projects in many different jurisdictions, and most counties or local municipalities have ordinances and bylaws regarding the development of wind energy projects. And most of them are very similar, sometimes with minor differences. The rules outlanded in Meeker County land development ordinances for commercial wind turbines are consistent with similar ordinances in counties all over the nation. They are not lax, nor are they prohibitive. They are clear, comprehensive, and fair. Siding regulations in Meeker County's wind ordinances are very similar to those we've seen in other upper midwestern states such as Iowa or Wisconsin, states with similar land use and rural communities where projects are cited.
So here is our board request. We don't see this as an emergency and is therefore not very worthy of even a temporary moratorium. Most new projects targeting the XL line will be at very early stages of development at this time, including ours, and won't be seeking any development permits or zoning in the near future. We would also ask that you please allow Blue Earth and any others who wish to participate to submit information to the commission in a reasonable time period if you are contemplating any changes to the ordinance. Further, we would really like to invite any of you to our existing facilities in the county for a tour of an operating wind facility. With us today is Operations Manager of the Adams and Danielson Projects, Justin Cordis. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the input. Anybody else? Sure.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Slichner, a resident here in Ledgefield.
I know Julie.
I'm thankful for the privilege that we can come here and exchange different ideas in a respectful manner and knowing that these are simply our ideas and we still can be cordial with one another. It's not the case all over our country or our world. So.
We just got started, so we don't know if we're going to be cordial. You haven't been to one of our board meetings.
Well, variety is the spice of life. I know what we all want here. The thing that is the common thread with all of us is that we want the best outcome for our families, for our community, and for our county. And we have to look, you know, very carefully at this and make an educated decision. And I also, growing up a fourth generation on the family farm, I know that farming is not easy. It's fairly, very challenging. The costs of everything, the machinery, the fertilizer, everything are becoming a greater and greater problem, as well as the costs of land. And so one cannot fault anyone for wanting to lease some of their land for, you know, revenue, additional revenue in our tenuous times. There's a global attack on farmers in the name of saving the planet. And, you know, all these regulations, the rising cost of fertilizer, et cetera, have led, I don't know if you're all aware of it, a recent farmer's protest in Germany, where they pretty much, you know, shut a lot of the area down. And it was not only the farmers who are quickly being put out of business there because of the costs, but people of many other professions joined in with them. It was very peaceful. But they're getting their point across of, hey, there are too many regulations. Netherlands is, is right behind them. And so when we talk about subsidies, we think, okay, where are the subsidies coming from? You know, if, if it's the government, then what that means is, you know, taxes. And taxes, and then there's another word we call inflation all the time. And if you've looked into the finances of the world and the Federal Reserve and so forth, you come to understand that inflation is a cover word for hidden taxes. And it's, it's a lot upon us. And one of the questions I have is, who owns the machines? If one has a turbine garden or on their land but does not own it, then they're at the mercy of decisions made by the owner. Who is the owner and who is far reaching behind this? I think there are many, many things we have to look into here. In Maryland, after a public hearing regarding major offshore wind project, the lawmakers canceled the project. They called for an end of offshore industrialization as the Maryland residents made it clear they do not want a foreign-owned offshore companies industrializing their coasts or the dangers it would cause to the fishing industry. Subsequently, New York and New Jersey also pulled out of the projects with this same company. Your land is yours. There's power in owning your land, both in financial and in liberty and security. When the land is now leased, who now owns the land? With that lease, what is being gained or lost? If it's a 25-year lease with two five-year extensions, is this binding? What rights do the landowners have? What if they want to get out of the agreement? Do we know these particulars? If they want to sell their land, how does this go on to someone wanting to buy their land? I think there are a lot of questions here that are unknowns, at least to me. And then the life expectancy of a windmill is 20 years. Then when that is no longer functionable and has to be disposed of it, what do we do with it? Where do we dispose of it? How do we dispose of it? Because we cannot recycle those batteries. Is this, is this more landfill? The cost of one turbine is between $2 to $4 million. Who pays for this? The operation and maintenance is $42,000 to $48,000 annually. And 9.06 failures are per turbine annually. Now, the profit ranges from $90,000 to $260,000 annually. So what I did was I took the median, which is the middle cost of the operation and maintenance, I mean disregarding the operation and maintenance, I took the median cost of the initial cost of a turbine and what the profit is, and I divided that out. And the median cost, if the profit would be the median $175,000 a year, it would take 17.13 years to pay for it. And the average life of the turbine is 20 years. You know, and then another factor is the costs of right, of wind and solar prices are expanding and, and going higher constantly. American Experiment found new wind is twice as expensive as the electricity generated by the Sherburne County coal plants. And new solar is 3.3 times more expensive. A lady in California just yesterday got her electric bill and it went up $100, and I think it was $40 from the previous month. She is a lady in her 90s, she's a senior citizen. Other people in the area also were completely shocked and startled and on senior citizen and, and pensions and so forth. This is a big concern. New wind and solar are more expensive than the state's existing natural gas and nuclear plants. The costs obtained, um, to figure these and calculate these things were obtained using the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission form. And in spite of the numerous government subsidies and mandates, Ford and GM have canceled contracts to produce electric vehicles because they have lost billions of dollars in spite of their subsidies. Huge subsidies for the Green Revolution have caused soaring inflation to the United States that is taking away purchasing power faster than it can increase incentives. China is quietly moving to total dominance of the global EU market. Largely, why? Because they control the lithium battery market.
I, I don't want to interject too much, but we do want to try to keep it to three minutes. So if you could do a quick synopsis?
Right.
Now, I don't want to, you know, understand you have so much and I saw another page and I'm like, oh, boy. I know that, exactly, so.
Okay.
Pardon my frankness, but I don't know how to other talk.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we talk about the costs of this. You know, and then there's a moral component, being China exploiting the people in Africa for lithium value, lithium and other minerals. In science, if we look at science, over 1,700 scientists have debunked the climate theory, saying climate change in the name of green energy has cost more lives than the problem itself. I understand we want to go forward. I understand we want to listen and carefully look at all aspects. And I empathize and understand with motivation for wanting subsidies. But, you know, we don't want to ignore the financial plight of the farmers. But I think, in fact, of the cost of this far outweighing the gains in the long term, we must look at long term. A few years ago, we were energy, energy independent. Do we want to entangle ourselves with foreign countries for our energy? Energy security is national security. I guess my, my greatest word of caution is we cannot hand over our liberties for short-term financial gains. Because with the shekels, come the shackles.
Thank you. Come right on up. Once again, if we could try to keep it to three minutes. I get to keep throwing this because I don't get to say this at home to my wife? Doesn't work. I can only do it in this setting, so I'm taking advantage of it.
Serious about your rebuttal.
Yeah, exactly. There is no rebuttal.
Hey, Amy Wilde, 72748, 220th Street, Dassel Township. I'm here because a couple of commissioners suggested that I attend. Several years ago, my husband Bob attended a public hearing about a solar farm to be installed next to our place. We would be one of the closest neighbors to that farm and we wanted to hear about what was going on. Bob came home from the meeting with the impression that the solar farm would probably be a better neighbor than a new housing development, which had been the original intent of that landowner. Indeed, although there was a lot of heavy traffic on the gravel road while the solar panels were being installed and new electrical poles erected, since it's been operational, there has really been no traffic congestion, no noise, no smelly emissions, and no effect on the environment or our health that we can detect. If anything, there's more wildlife in our neighborhood. Our property values have increased, according to the county assessor. The panels are visible from one area of our property and that is mostly behind our machine shed, so they don't even interfere with the view on our house site. In my opinion, the solar farm is conveniently located by Dassel's Industrial Park, which consumes a lot of electricity and employs hundreds of people. There are also two electric substations in the vicinity, one belonging to Excel Energy and the other to Meeker Cooperative. I understand that power is lost the longer wires travel from the source. So it seems to me, although I'm no expert, that putting solar farms beside power substations and industrial parks makes sense. I was kind of surprised when I read in the newspaper that some commissioners think there is some kind of public health and safety emergency related to installing more solar farms in the county. I've never read about this supposed danger in any reputable, peer-reviewed scientific article. So I thought I'd come today and see if I could learn any more about the theory. Yeah, I do remember that decades ago, there was a group who thought they should wear tin hats in case the wireless radio raves floating around the atmosphere might be seeking to control their brains. And I remember back when I sat on this board, there was one woman who was absolutely convinced that communication towers cause cancer. But the greatest threat to public health in my neighborhood appears to be from the stormwater runoff from the south side of the city of Dassel that has been diverted to the north end of my property and flooded several area acres of. and flooded several area acres of former cropland. And also, there's a dilapidated farm site that sits next door to the solar farm where junk cars, camping trailers, derelict buildings, and piles of construction material refuse keep accumulating. Nobody from planning and zoning appears to be doing anything about cleaning up the junk farm site or doing anything about what appears to be an unlawful diversion of storm sewer runoff. Are the solar panels a greater danger to public health than those? Are they a greater danger to my health than the emissions from a coal-burning utility creating the same amount of electricity? I don't think so. During my fourteen years on this board, I learned that people fear change. But change is inevitable. And I notice there's a couple of other items on your agenda that indicate a possible fear of change today. Is there really any truth the thought behind this supposed public health emergency? Or is it simply a gut reaction to change? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy.
And for full disclosure, I do have one of those tin hats, but it was for a Halloween costume, not for other parts, but. Um, anybody else?
Uh, well, good morning. My name is Nathan Dahl, I'm here today on behalf of the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition. The Land and Liberty Coalition is a statewide nonprofit group made up of farmers, landowners, taxpayers, ratepayers, business and community leaders and proponents of an all-the-above-energy future. As an organization reunited by our support for protecting private property rights, supporting economic development, rural revitalization, um, yeah, building a resilient and reliable energy grid and ensuring the United States' national security. And echoing one of the previous speaker's, uh, points, yes, uh, energy security is national security and that's why we should build a diverse energy grid that uses every source that the free market says is the most efficient and most affordable. Which in turn would hopefully give ratepayers, um, a breathe, a breather as well. Uh, I'm here today to ask that a moratorium not be instilled, just, because there are many areas where this could be potentially done administratively if there are health and safety concerns. However, I, I believe that has not been demonstrated quite yet. However, if a moratorium is instilled today, I would request, and the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition would request, that the ordinance-making process would be public to solicit feedback from interested parties. As a group, we've been involved in a couple of these processes, notably in McLeod County, Wright County, and Dodge County. And so, uh, I know Chippewa County is also going through the same process right now. So if that were something that were to happen today, uh, we would hopefully like to be a part of that process, so. Thank you very much.
Just one thing for clarification, Nathan, could you say, state where you're from?
Oh, certainly, I live in Shakopee.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? He's got a Wisconsin sweatshirt on, so he better tone my remarks again.
My name is Lee Sunmark and I live at five nine two five one, two hundred and eighth Street, Greenleaf Township. Um, I spent a half hour talking with Paul about reasons why we need to move forward and we need to move forward quickly. I'm, I'm a biologist. Um, I got, I got a, a degree in biology from the University of Wisconsin River Falls, a minor in conservation, broad area minor in science, and spent thirty-five years with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources as a area fisheries supervisor, working in these, uh, this, this county and six other counties. I can't go through all the reasons that I did with Paul, why we need to move forward, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna cover two in particular. The first one is climate change. And climate change impacts are happening a lot faster than the solutions to climate change that we're coming up with. If you don't believe in climate change, look outside. We're, we're suffering from El Nino effects, but also climate change impacts. Businesses are suffering because of the weather changes that we're experiencing and how climate change, climate change works. We're not gonna leave our kids a, a much better planet unless we, we move forward and we move forward quickly by building a power infra, building a power infrastructure. A, and doing so with clean, clean energy. So that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, I'm also an electric vehicle owner. And what I've learned owning an electric vehicle is it costs me half as much to power my electric vehicle as you, you would pay to power your combustion vehicle. The technology is, is moving very quickly forward. And soon farmers are gonna figure out that when the technology catches up a little bit, that they can farm much cheaper with an electric farm vehicle. Half the price of putting gasoline or diesel in their, in their engines. Electric vehicles are more powerful. And they're quickly gonna figure out that that's the way to go, uh, with their, with combines and tractors as soon as the technology catches up. And as the technology catches up, we're gonna need a more powerful or, or a more, a better electric infrastructure to deal with it. And we can't do that quick enough. So those are just a, a couple of reasons why I think this, we can't delay. Delay, delay, delay just means we're gonna leave our kids in a, you know, bigger pickle than what we already have now, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, step right on up.
I'm Bernie Headkey from, uh, northwest of Grove City. My, Meeker County has a rich history of, uh, in agriculture, but it's becoming very worrisome how productive farmland is being whittled away by solar farms. I realize solar energy is an important resource, but there has to be a better solution than using precious farmland for unpleasant-looking solar panels, which I would probably be doing because it would probably be right in my view that I would look out of my picture window. Food doesn't magically appear on store shelves and the, our land is being used. You know, not for agricultural purposes. I know we need, I know we need, uh, wind power and stuff like that and that doesn't take as much land, but. So I'm in favor of the, of the moratorium.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Uh, anybody else? Looks like someone's thinking about it anyway.
Hey, I'm Joe McCarty, I'm from Harvey Township, I'm a supervisor on the town board there. And I wanted to, uh, thank everybody for considering the moratorium. Cause, uh, you know, I've heard a lot of feedback about, uh, a lot of concerns from, uh, potential of what could happen coming down the road, um. And it's, and the moratorium, like you said, isn't a prohibition of solar or wind. It's just making sure you do your due diligence and try to do your best job, you know, to get it right. So I think there's a lot of opinions on both sides. As you can tell by a lot of people here, there's a lot of interest in this, so. Thank you for considering the moratorium.
All right, thank you for your time. Anybody else? This is your opportunity to speak, so come on up.
Chad Kip, uh, Harvey Township Board Chair. Last fall, we, uh, um, I would say nonchalantly put out, uh, we had Excel Energy come to our, um, township meeting to explain their, their plan and their process of moving forward with the power lines coming through. We filled the basement with concerned citizens about what was going to be happening and moving forward through our township. In that meeting, the, uh, Excel Energy informed us that in the future, if the line does go through, that they'll, they'll be looking for five thousand acres of, of ag land in our area for solar energy. That equates to twenty-five percent of our ag land just in Harvey Township. To say that it's not going to affect the people in our area and Ms. Bredeis, in the last meeting you said that we have a solar and wind energy business six blocks from the courthouse. And to say that we don't want, uh, new businesses moving into town, I don't think that's the scenario. Just think about the fertilizer plants, the, the co-ops, the runnings, the parts stores, all that kind of stuff. But going back to, I don't think that the moratorium is to, uh, shut off all this wind and solar. It's to take a second look at what you talk about, the future of our people in our area, to make sure they got it right. Not everybody, you know, your, uh, your solar fields, it, it's, it's fine, do whatever you want on your own land. But how many acres of land are getting affected by that power line coming through that you're benefiting from and they're not? Um, I, I, I think you, I applaud whoever, um, brought this to the attention to take a second look and pump the brakes on big corporate wind and solar companies coming through for this. And on behalf of Harvey Township, the way our, the people that came to our meetings, they would applaud, many would applaud you guys taking a second look at this. So I, I, I support the moratorium, just to make sure that we get it right for the future.
Okay, thank you, Chad. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Cole Swirsky, currently I am a Candy Oi County resident. Um, within this calendar year, I will be projected to be moving into Meeker County. Where the proposed line is to be run, uh, will be in front of my personal property. And my biggest concern is looking at it. I drive by the one in Hatwater every day, the solar field, and it looks like hell. It's not maintained, I don't wanna stare at that for the rest of my life or have my kids look at that for the rest of their life, so. My biggest concern and why I'm in favor of the moratorium is to take a second look and make sure that this is done properly and not put in front of people's faces. That it can be utilized, but I don't want it to be done wrongfully, so. That's, I'm not against it, I wanna see it done right. So, that's what I have to say.
All right. Kind of to the point. Anybody else? Come on down.
Morning, everyone. I'm Mark Volk, um, I reside right here in Meeker County. Uh, I work for, I'm the AGM for Integrated Power Services, which is right here, uh, within the city limits. Where we currently have and still do maintain and refurbish wind turbine generators. We have been doing that since about two thousand and three. I'm, I'm speaking in favor of, uh, of the wind side of things. We employ currently between a hundred and a hundred and twenty people, uh, right here within the city limits that, that take part of this, feed their families off of this and, and, uh, it is their, their, their bread and butter refurbishing turbine generators. We also do work with, uh, some of the, some of the people that have spoken here this morning. We have currently good relationships with that and, uh, like I said, we're, we're all in favor of pushing wind through. It's, uh, I believe it's a viable energy source and, and, um, it's lucrative for, for, for companies with, that, that do the repair and, and for companies that have been getting repaired of these turbine generators and, um, I'm all for the expansion of that and against the moratorium.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. That was like fifty seconds.
Darlene is coming up.
Hello, Darlene Quodlinke, four twenty-five North, I'll be brief. I don't like to see our farmland gobbled up. I mean, I don't own farmland, but it's our economy, it's our communities, it's our way of life, so. I'm against, and when I'm hearing five thousand acres, I'm like, oh, man. This is the tip of the iceberg. It never hurts to take a deep breath and pause and study, okay? So I'm a supporter of moratorium. And I'd like to give you this example, because you did a wonderful job on that marijuana ordinance. I was like so impressed, right? But you can't cover everything and there are unknowns. And this is what I got asked last week. So Darlene, now you'll be able to grow marijuana on our own, right, on our own plots and that, right? I go, yeah. The state limits and da-da-da-da-da, yeah? Does that mean we can sell it at a farmer's market? Okay, so, I mean, there's so many things that we don't know, the implications are out there. It doesn't hurt to take your time and research, so I favor a moratorium just for that reason.
All right. Thank you, darling, that was forty-nine seconds. Anybody else? Anybody else or forever hold your peace? This is your one opportunity.
Justin Cordis, um, I actually live just northwest of Grove City. Uh, at the moment, I'm speaking as a Meeker County resident, not as representative of.
Okay, I pretend, you can put your hand over that and I'll pretend I don't see that part. Just kidding.
Uh, of course, you know, I mean, there has been a lot of talk of solar going around right now because of the Me, the Excel Energy line. Uh, myself, I'm gonna have a poll once that Excel Energy line, I'll have a poll that will sit a quarter mile off my driveway. I too don't wanna look at that. I know this hearing has nothing to do with that. So I do see there's a line and I understand a lot of fear of the solar projects and stuff going like that right now, but I do also fear that if we do put in a, uh, you know, moratorium, sorry, I'm not gonna say this word. A pause on this, uh, what's gonna happen is Excel Energy is still going to be looking for this stuff. It's going to happen whether it's in Meeker County or the county's next to us. So what I think will happen if we do put this into place is there's a good chance that we'll actually be, restricting people from getting the income that could be coming in from these projects. You know, and I know there's, like I said, a lot of fear about this stuff, but I mean, the impact we've seen, you know, I've lived in Meeker County my entire life. I've been in wind for pushing twenty years now. The impact you see from these machines is actually very minimal. And as I've said before, if you guys would like to, we'd be, I mean, this is bluer than that now. If you guys would like to, we'd love to host an, see a project in operation.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Chair, do I have one written comment?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, this is from Steve Burgo. Uh, he says, as a resident farmer in Danielson Township, I'm thankful to have the opportunity to comment on this proposed moratorium on wind and solar development. After reading the proposal, I'm struck by the alarming nature of the proposal. This moratorium is framed as an emergency threat to public health, safety, and residents' well-being. This gives the appearance of an alarming and dangerous situation. How many applications is the planning and zoning folks been overwhelmed with? Are there any current applications to build wind farms now? As a rural resident, I have witnessed the planning and zoning board has been able to balance my quiet enjoyment of my property with the rights of others to expand and develop their ag operations. I understand that there are trade-offs. It is no different in this new era of wind and solar development. We have reasonable and tested regulations in place to address this new development and staff that has dealt with these trade-offs before. The current zoning regulations were established after considering ordinances in place in multiple counties. These same ordinances also have been successfully tested and applied here in Meeker County. I wonder how many complaints have been received due to the application of these regulations. The current zoning restrictions already greatly restrict the landowners' rights to use their property for wind development. Takes multiple years and hundreds of thousands of dollars to complete the currently required environmental studies. Additionally, there are studies required to make sure that nighttime sound levels are low, light flicker isn't an issue, and obstructions to radio waves or microwave beam signals don't occur. Current regulations go to great length to protect roads and bridges. The existing setback requirements already exclude most of Meeker County from wind development. The threat that the county is going to be overwhelmed by new wind development is simply unrealistic. Most areas of the county have too many rural residences and lack an adequate rent, wind resource to allow for wind development. There are areas of western and southwestern Meeker County that can be used for wind development. Increased setback requirements would remove these areas as well and would essentially be a ban on wind development anywhere in the county. In closing, I feel that we already have adequate zoning to address wind development. It's been applied and worked it well. Landowners need some options to decide for themselves how to use their property. A stricter zoning ordinance will basically remove the rights of landowners to make these decisions at all. Thank you, Steve Burgel.
All right. Thank you, Andrew, for keeping it under three. If you're a slower reader, I could see some difficulty. It took me six, for sure. Anybody else have any comments? Anybody else? Okay, with that said, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So low, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. At this time, I'd like to go through our commissioner comments and I'd like to, if we could, we could start with Steve Schmidt since he's the one who brought the moratorium to light in the first place. And we'll just move left to right if that works for the other commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I brought this up so either I, you know, I'm here, you're in favor or you're against. It's one of them things. But I think the main thing and my whole intent bringing this up is, you know, a moratorium does not automatically equal more restrictions. And I had a conversation with Steve Burgel yesterday and he told me that I think you guys are all affiliated here with the wind in the frontier. And he told me there'd be representation here in town. We had a good conversation. Steve expressed the concerns of, you know, the restrictions right now in Meeker County being too restrictive on wind actually and the advances that wind energy has made and different things. So I mean, we had a really good conversation. Also, in the past week, Chippewa County Commissioner has reached out to me. They're looking at a moratorium. Renville County reached out to me here, Randy Kramer, a couple of days ago. There, he wanted to propose a moratorium, but he didn't quite know how to go about it. So they're looking at a moratorium. And what we kind of, in my conversation with Randy, what we talked about too is perhaps doing what the Association of Minnesota Counties does and other committees that we sit on, put a work group together with a couple of commissioners from different counties and some planning and zoning folks and allow experts in the room to give some feedback. This, a moratorium doesn't automatically mean no, not, never. And, and right now with the transmission line, we all know, I mean, we can, the subsidy is great if you're receiving it. You know what I mean? But somebody's going to get left out and we have to take that into consideration too. One of my farmers up in Union Grove Township talked to me one day. He's got 140 acres, he's 85 years old, he's still farming, but the pivot shot and man, they want to put 140 acres of solar on there. Great deal for him. And I completely agree with you, but what about your neighbor? I don't know anything about what sits around that 140 acres. And we need to look at all this. The wind energy has changed a lot. That's a new player in our game in Meeker County a little bit. You know, we got a little bit on the western side, but the scope of these projects are massive. Right now, I think we got about 50 acres of solar in the entire county, give or take a couple acres. And these are solar gardens, so they're to 1 megawatt or less. I mean, and there's, I went XL, I took one of the guys in the back room at Litchfield the other day and we talked and, you know, you find the guy that's a little exuberant and maybe not real high on the pay scale with XL and, oh, you ain't going to stop anyway. Public Utility Commission is going to have rule over all this. Don't even bother. Well, I don't operate like that. And I don't think that's, I think that's reckless for this county to operate like that. We need to look into this. Do we know if there's any public health hazards or not? We really don't know because we don't, we can't comprehend from where we sit right now, the size and scope and the magnitude of this project and impact it's going to have on agricultural setup and makeup of our county. That doesn't mean we're going to be able to stop every last bit of it and that's not our intent. Our intent in the moratorium is digging into it, getting with our neighbors, finding out, maybe they got a plan in Candy Oi County or Renville County that, hey, let's take part of their plan and part of Chippewa's plan and make a better plan for Meeker. Maybe Steve talked about the restrictions on wind turbines that it's too restrictive. And if, right now, if you want to replace the turbine, the turbines are, you guys know better than I do, but they're four and a half megawatt. Does that sound right compared to the old ones that were ones or twos or something like this? So one tower puts out, well, three towers do, but now we can't add towers because of makeup of the, so maybe we, we got to play all this out. There's a lot of work to be done here. And to say it, put it all on plant, land use and planning and zoning board to say, hey, we need to get this ordinance updated in the next month or two, I think is ridiculous. We just don't have the information needed. This power line, if it wasn't for the power line coming through, transmission line, we need added transmission. If it wasn't for that power line coming through, we wouldn't be having this conversation at all. And we know that. So that's a cause and effect piece and we have to do our due diligence. So that was my whole, my whole prospect to bring this forward and it's developed more from it. So I mean, I, nothing I heard today changes my outlook on this project overall.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Did he stay under three minutes?
I, I think he was right on three minutes.
Well, I took a lot of notes today from what all of you said. And I've had a great discussion with Lee. I also had a great discussion with Steve. He had called me also. I've learned a lot about solar and wind power over the course of this that I didn't know because there's a lot of very well-informed people out there. Blueworth, you made a comment that currently you're not in any permitting stage of any plans. Then Nathan, you had said you want the process to be open and it is open. Open meeting law on the planning and zoning and any changes that are coming is open to the public and you can sit in and make comment on those. Lee spoke of climate change. It's important in the changes that are coming and the effectiveness of green energy. And I am a believer in solar and wind. I like it. Chad understood, said he just understood, just wanted us to take a look, take a second look, pump the brakes. Let's see.
Can I, can I add just one?
No, your three minutes is up.
Just full disclosure for everybody in the room.
You know, it comes back to you too.
I know, I'm used to that.
Full disclosure for everybody in the room, I've got a solar garden. So I've got a 1 megawatt solar garden myself. So it's not, I'm not anti-solar.
And Cole brought up something about aesthetics and how it looks and what you have to look at. You all have very valid points, but I always kind of think about, I build a lot of things, you know, water, wood and different things. Do I ever build things the same twice? Maybe the outcome is the same, but I maybe change how I do it along the way. Is that not what we're really looking at doing here with this? Is just taking a look and saying, all right, are our current ordinances, you know, correct? Someone talked about conditions. Well, when we put conditions on individual ones, that can become unfair too. Because why did this one get this condition and the next application doesn't? Maybe we can clean some of that up with a little tweaking of our ordinances. So do I want to see a moratorium that lasts an indefinite period of time? Absolutely not. I don't.
Can't do it.
Well, you can't do it either. That's right. But I mean, I would like to see our planning and zoning, who, from what I understand, has done considerable work on this already. And it could be a very short moratorium, could be. So I think we need to pump the brakes and take a look at this and make sure that what we do as a board protects all of Meeker County citizens, doesn't prohibit, protects, because I believe that's what we're here for.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Julie.
I'm going to go next.
You can go next.
Okay. Well, I, we're very fortunate to have the freedom of speech, the freedom of the press, and the freedom of the common folk to come and address bodies of government. So I thank you for coming today. This has been a very, very nice morning of expressions of opinions and concerns. So I thank you for coming. I have been questioning this moratorium for a month. When I looked up what the word moratorium means, yes, it means to prohibit an activity for a period of time. And I, I'm, I'm questioning the purpose of the moratorium. The actual document reads, statute 145, gives county board the ability to make ordinances for all or part of the county and to regulate a threat to public health. This attempt to justify the moratorium, to, to, to put a stop on wind and solar requests from property owners, to stop businesses from coming into our county for a period of time, based on the claim that solar and wind pose a threat to public health and safety. To me, the wording of that document is concerning. It mentions seven times in this document, the word emergency. It mentions seven times a threat to public health and safety. I serve on the Meeker County Public Health Board. We just met on Wednesday. I asked the board if there has ever been a concern in regard to solar or wind that has come before the board. And they all looked at me in shock and said, never. Not once has a solar or wind issue come before the Meeker County Public Health Board. And to try and justify a moratorium based on a threat, I feel is unfounded. The second attempt to justify putting a halt, pumping the brakes for solar and wind systems in the document reads that the Office of Zoning is under great pressure with applications for solar and wind. In all of 2023, there were two applications for solar, two. I feel the attempt to justify the moratorium on that grounds is exaggerated. I fear that the real reason for this moratorium is to place more restrictions on what a property owner can do with their property and to put controls on what businesses can and cannot do in Meeker County. The document states, no solar or wind systems shall be accepted, processed, or approved by the county for up to a year. And that the county may enforce this ordinance by any and all means. If the wording of the document and the attempts at justification, in my eyes, are very concerning. What this document will do, yes, it will open up the ability of the zoning and this board to look at current rules and regulations. But it also opens up for the zoning and this board to create and apply additional controls and restrictions. And we already have regulations for solar and wind. I thank you for your kind allowance of my comments.
I don't think it's my kind allowance, but I'll take it.
Thank you.
Now for our seasoned veteran.
Yeah, right. So I'm going to be brief about this.
Oh, nah, yeah.
I always have to say something about my age.
Yeah, I know. I can't help it.
So I, when this came up, I was surprised to hear that we, yeah, we got two phone calls and one of them was about 62,000 acres and that was alarming to me. I'm going to preface this by saying I'm a huge believer in anyone can do anything they want with their property. But I think we as a, as a commission, board of commissioners have an obligation, as other commissioners have in the past, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for your neighbors and for the whole county. That's a lot of acres. It's a lot different than 50 acres. And, and to paint us as not being in favor of alternative energy, that certainly isn't the case for me. I know it isn't for Steve or anyone else here. So I have had, I've listened to everyone, I've made some notes. And I understand if it's your business, you know, and you don't reside or you certainly have a right to speak to it. But when I hear the people from Harvey and other places saying their concerns and they had a basement full of people, I think we have an obligation as a commission to just take a step back and make sure we're doing this right. It's a moratorium. I have, I don't think any one of us at this board are trying to stop it. But we want to make sure we're doing it right. I worry about retiring and what it costs when we do that. I worry about the rights of the neighbor who's not interested in having it. You know, we've been through this with a lot of things, with feedlots, you know, people move into the country and then they don't like the smell of the beef and the cattle raising next door. So I just think it's our obligation as a commission. I hope it's not going to be very long, but I am going to be voting in favor of the moratorium. Thank you.
She picked beef there, too.
I know that, exactly. They go their nose, like, okay.
That's really not true.
We're cabbie and I can't help it. But.
Get back.
She, she always does. I only expect that. I also am in favor of the moratorium. I appreciate everybody's comments and everything. I can't argue with the points that everybody has brought up. But I think as this board is looking at this, they just want to stop for a second, make sure we have the ordinances correct and move on. And I think it's simple as that. It's not a, we're against this. It's not, it's not a political agenda. I think it's just a county agenda just to say, hey, we want to protect our residents, our neighbors, and move forward from that point on. And I, I was for the moratorium before for full disclosure, but I appreciate all the comments. And I think those comments will go into the discussion and the planning and zoning discusses everything that we talked about today. That's the whole purpose of having a public meeting too, is to get out all that information that you have, whether it's on this side or that side. It's a good, it's a good, it's what, it's what makes this country work. With that said, is there any more comments of the commissioners? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a move then.
I'd, I'd just say I'm not anti-wind and solar. I'm pro-planning.
That's right.
And I mentioned that to Steve Burgel on the phone the other. It's not that I'm anti-anything. I'm pro-planning and figuring out what's best.
And also, Mr. Chair, everyone will have a chance with planning and zoning goes through these things to attend and put in, you know, I think people that are in the business, I would be interested in a tour, like you said. But we just want to make sure.
Education is huge.
Education is huge. Thank you.
I fear that once this goes through, and it will, it will pass today, that it will be an open floodgate for our zoning and planning and for this board to make additional rules and regulations that restrict a property's owner's right to do with their property what they can. And it will restrict and deter businesses from coming into Meeker County. And it scares me that it will be for the potential of up to a year.
Mr. Chair, I have all the faith in the world in planning and zoning. They've done a good job in other areas and they'll do a good. Nobody is trying to stop business. And I'm, I'm kind of exasperated with hearing that. We're all pro-business. So with that.
My sentiments are the same, Beth. Anybody else?
I think the planning and zoning has done already considerable work on this. As I look at the planning and zoning administrator and you've worked hard already. You're not done, but you've worked hard on this already. And so it's been a work in motion.
Anything else? Anybody? Like I said, for me, I just don't want to see this county drastically changed by us not doing our due diligence. And that's it. That was my only thing for the moratorium is just to pump the brakes as, as Paul said. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve or table or not approve.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve an ordinance instituting an emergency moratorium on solar energy farms and wind energy conversion systems.
A motion by Commissioner Ober.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Schmidt. Any further discussion?
I do not believe that a moratorium is necessary to do research. And I am not in favor of additional restrictions on property owners and businesses.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Any other discussion?
The only other thing I'll say is currently they have no applications in. If we're gonna make a change, let's make it before somebody has an application in and use change on them during the process.
I would hate to put on a moratorium a year from now.
Exactly.
I mean, now if we're gonna do it, let's do it pre, you know, proactively and pro-planning, like I said.
Point well taken, Paul.
How will it be determined how long the moratorium will be in effect? Does that happen with this motion or?
Mr. Chair, Andrew. It will be for one year or until you have adopted regulations. So once you adopt regulations at the time, you would also lift the moratorium. So if the planning commission comes back in in April with recommendations for you to adopt this ordinance and you choose to do that, then that is the point of the moratorium. That happens in July, September, whatever.
It's a maximum of one year.
Maximum of one year. If you get to that point, there is opportunity in statute to further extend that. But we will cross that bridge if we come to it. We fully expect that we will be done with this well before a year.
Exactly. Andrew?
And and let's bear in mind one thing. That does not mean a single one of the ordinances will change.
We don't, yeah.
It's potentially, I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen. I'm just saying it has the potential of not changing.
It opens.
Mr. Chair, I call for the question.
I don't know what call for the question even means.
I can, I can ask you, Paul. I know, exactly. I'll give you a clarification.
Yeah, I don't.
To call the question, you need a second. Call the question, you need two thirds. I'll second your call.
Oh, my gosh. All right, can I have a vote on that?
You do. You need two thirds.
All right. All those in favor of the call the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes.
Four to one.
All right. Now with the motion at hand, any, all those in favor, please.
You need a roll call.
We need a roll call.
A roll call on this one. All right. Thank you, Andrew. Go with it.
Commissioner Obergey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen.
No.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein.
Yes. All right. That the motion carries. I thank you all for attending today.
Thank you. You can stay, but I mean, thanks for your comments.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Steve, I know him. I know him pretty well.
You for coming.
Appreciate your words.
You for coming, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next, sir. Yeah, nice.
It's not, it's not easy to come and stand before.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
It's not easy to come and make more comments. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
I told him, I said the same thing. I said, I'm not anti.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Barb, we're having a little temporary break then.
Are you, are you making it an official?
Very good.
Why don't you just fire it up? I think Paul will be hearing shortly. So, all right, thanks.
Dan, just one item before I go into my items. I would like to introduce that Logan Mack has been with us just a couple of weeks. He's our new County Ditch Inspector. And so we wanted you to meet him.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Yep.
Welcome.
This is what happens when ditches go awry. We get all these people, so no intimidation at all.
Even when they don't go awry, they.
Yes.
Our new ditch inspector, Matt.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Right. And I wanted you to meet him here before this afternoon, when we have the township, and we're gonna introduce him to the township.
Oh, perfect.
Good. Welcome.
Good.
Nice meeting you, Matt. Thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
All right. Barbara Locke, you have the floor.
Thank you. The first item is to appointments to the County Canvas Board. And you saw in my outline that there'll be three elections to which I need Canvas Board members. One of the important parts of the Canvas Board members is they can't be on the ballot. But you also get to choose someone if you aren't available. So you have the opportunity to say, yes, I'll be on the Canvas Board, however, I'm going to delegate, just so that our Canvas Board is cool. I do have the opportunity, and Andrew and I talked about this, that maybe we want to appoint for March, see what happens in July, candidacy and et cetera, and then reappoint in July for the August and November. Or maybe you want to take, choose two of you today, and it will be for the twenty twenty-four. So it's either option.
I think I would suggest waiting till July because there's a lot of unknowns on this board right now.
So then you would just point for the March, and that's perfectly fine with me as well.
Is that, is that what everybody thinks, too?
I would agree.
Let me, let me just say that it's not a difficult.
Yeah, I've done.
It's not.
It's easy.
But it's.
Just the candidacy.
But you still have to have. I agree that we should just.
So question then, if only one of us is not on the ballot, which maybe Beth and Steve would be the two that might not be on the ballot, you know, how does that go if there's just one? How does that work then?
You would appoint commissioners, and if you can't make an appointment for somebody that's not on the ballot, then we have to go to a secondary appointment.
Okay.
So my position as auditor is to fill that board as needed.
And so if there's not two commissioners available or even qualifying, all four commissioners or five commissioners on the ballot, we've had that before,
then it's my job by statute to assign that. So at this point, we know that you all qualify for March. Maybe that's what we should do because there's unknown. I brought it to you just so you could have this discussion, and we could be ready for either twenty twenty-four or just March.
I I agree with you, Danny. I think let's just do March for now.
And and I live close. I'd be happy to volunteer. I've done it once.
You and I did it the last time, right? Which is, it's easy peasy.
So I nominate Paul then.
Second.
Well, I'm not gonna be here.
You need one or you need two?
I need two.
Two.
Stephen, let's do these, you guys, Danny. I might not be here, otherwise.
I don't care. When, when is it gonna be?
March seventh.
Set for March seventh at one P M.
Okay.
Right here in this boardroom.
Oh.
What? Prime West?
Prime West.
And if I'm not here, you have to go to that, so.
So I I disvolunteer.
Julie?
Julie, you're close.
No, I won't be here.
Well, she'll be in Florida.
Prox is.
Guess what?
Anyway, I may be here.
Yeah, I guess so. Would've had better luck. So.
You know what? You can, you can take two and then.
Yeah, no, I.
People do.
It's, it doesn't take that long at all for a March, too.
Oh, I've done it, too.
Yep.
When we spend a half an hour, maybe forty-five minutes.
And if you at the time can't attend, you can delegate. So if you're the assigned member and you can't show out of, out of five, you can send a delegate.
Okay.
So like in your case, Danny, you could delegate Andrew to come for you.
Oh, nice.
You should tell him.
I'm dying. Thing I'm gonna write down.
But for March, we have, so for March, we have Commissioner Schmidt and Shifelbein.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I'll bring it back in July.
Sounds good.
Okay, can, do we need a, we need a motion for that then?
Yes, it's an appointment.
I so moved to appoint Steve and Danny to the County Canvas Board.
For March seventh.
For March seventh. We have to designate there.
All right. Julie makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Beth. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
The next one is a resolution to establish the absentee ballot board. This is a formality. We do each election cycle either for a two-year period or one year. I'm using it for a one-year period for twenty twenty-four. And it is my obligation to find a sufficient number of trained election judges and qualified judges to do this along with staff. There is two different statutes we need to go by. The absentee ballot part is the obligation of the county board to establish that board. The U O C A V A mail is my obligation. However, I want one team that we don't look at the ballot that we're using as different types. I have one team. So you are establishing for me the absentee and U O C A V A board in uniform. And that's my recommendation on the resolution.
How many are on that board?
I have probably about sixteen names on that board right now.
Okay.
We have the four or six election staff, several from my office, several from planning and zoning, as you see that I put in here, the departments. Planning and zoning, the assessor's office. There's some from records, which will be my office, and then there's some part-time election staff. And we do have a few community members that have expressed interest, and I am also involving them.
So if they express interest, what is the?
Express interest, we have them go through the election judge training, some recommendations, and so then I assign them to my list. So I do have.
And the final decision is yours.
Yes, it is. Because they have to be qualified and duly represented.
Sure.
Their training is good for one year?
Yeah.
It's good for a two-year period.
Two years.
So I have election judges that need to take training. And then, like I said, the discretion through the process is, is my recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks on that one, Barb. Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I so moved to adopt resolution and direct Meeker County Elections Manager to establish an absentee and U O C A V A ballot board that will consist of sufficient number of trained and qualified election judges and trained deputy election staff to perform the required tasks for all elections to be held in twenty twenty-four.
Nicely read.
Thank you.
Need to have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Discussion. And this one's a resolution.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Obergey?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the uncollected and collected taxes, which I show a report to you annually. It's a kind of summary. It really just give you the pulse of the county. And as you see in twenty twenty-three, the percentage of unpaid and the dollar amount unpaid at year end is again down, which is, you know, very favorable. Other item is the unpaid all years. So those years twenty-two and earlier plus adding twenty-three in also is at our low point. So it's a favorable environment. Not saying that it's nice for those who are on that list because there are some very definite hardships. But the trend for Meeker County is down.
Barb, you may not know this answer because you probably never looked, but how do we compare to other counties in that?
You know, I don't know that I ever look. So I probably could. I don't know if they do a public one like this, or I could certainly reach out and just ask.
I was just curious if we were running more or less or.
Yeah.
A few years back, the county board had asked that it exist trend so that the board knew the pulse of the county or that we were open about the pulse of the county. So that's this report.
We've been on a steady downward trend since nineteen, with the exception of that little blip. And I mean, that isn't even very much of a blip.
And keep in mind, you know, the dollar levy was larger, but, you know, so the percentage is relevant, and the dollar amount is less. However, we did send a reminder notice. This is last week. For those who are first here, don't like when there is hardships out there, very definitely in this dollar.
Oh, sure.
You know, sad for them, but.
Absolutely.
The overall health of the county, as I'm showing you, is very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
And the one thing on the canvassing board, just for Steve's, that is a non-perdeum situation.
Yes, you get to do that. So find another.
Pro bono? We're doing pro bono.
We're doing pro bono. Just so when you write it down in your sheet, you don't have to.
He's definitely.
Don't have to go through embarrassment.
Exactly.
There's two of them in statute that you cannot be paid for to be on there, even if you're mandated to be on the board. And it's true. The other one is.
Equalization.
Port of equalization.
Right. Those two. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Thanks.
All right. With that, we're going to at ten oh five instead of nine oh five, going to Andrew.
I, Mr. Chair, I didn't want to put on the agenda that I thought the public hearing would last an hour or so.
I knew fifteen minutes on.
I had a feeling that wasn't gonna be right. Actually, I'm very optimistic with the ten oh five, to be honest, so.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, there was discussion by the board about taking a look at resolutions similar to what other counties have adopted regarding the, the state's effort to update the official state flag and seal. We worked with department heads to put together an estimated cost to the county. And we estimate that to be about fifty-three thousand dollars. The vast bulk of that, about fifty thousand is within the sheriff's office. And that would be for updates to all the badges, the patches, and the decals on the vehicles. Now, statute requires, you know, two things. First, that the state flag must be flown in, on the Capitol and in courtrooms, in no other locations, and then also that state agencies need to update their, their seals by the end of twenty twenty-four. There's not a requirement that we take on any of this cost, but at the same time, you know, why would we continue to fly old state flags and display old state seals in places where it starts to look like we're just behind the times on things? So that's what the estimated cost would be is about fifty-three thousand dollars. If the board was to adopt this resolution, what we would do is provide it to, we would write a letter, send to the governor's office along with our legislative delegation, and go from there. Adam available for any questions?
I, I have to say, as I know, I was one who, who brought this forward from M R C, but I actually really like the new seal with the loon in the middle. And my objection to the flag is it does not say Minnesota on it.
There's no indication as to what, what country, what county, what anything.
So I actually, I have, I don't care if you want to, I don't care what they do with the flag, really. How that sounds, but I've had a lot of calls about it, of people who do, and so I'm gonna support this resolution. It doesn't matter to me. I joined something to kind of find out about it. I think they could have done a better job of designing, but to me, it doesn't matter. It's the flag. It is what it is.
I'm curious, what has this already cost Minnesota taxpayers?
Can't seem to get a direct answer on that.
Yeah, you know, what?
And the total cost, I think, to all the counties is probably in the end gonna be millions. And I don't know if this is gonna make any difference, but we'll see.
If, even if we send this and request that it, it not be accepted, will it go back to the original?
No, I think they vote on it. When did they vote on it, Andrew?
Um, the legislature would have to basically overturn the work of the emblems redesign commission, you know, before May. Um, and so they, the led, my understanding, based on what's been reported in the news, is the legislature has essentially a veto authority over it. If they were to vote against, you know, take action to overturn this, then it would, yes, it would remain either, we would have to see what the legislature did, right? They could say redesign commission, go back and do something different. Or they could say we're gonna refer to our current emblems.
I kind of like the current one, but it is what it is, so.
Mr. Chair, move to approve a resolution opposing the redesign of the state flag and seal.
All right, motion made by.
Flagging.
And second. Any further discussion? This one's a resolution, so.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Obergey?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes.
You've been busy today with resolutions.
My throat hurts.
With that said, motion passes. Move on to, is there any administrators' report?
Yeah, I wanted to update you on an effort that we've been working on in the staff level for a little while now. Uh, we've been working to put together a wellness committee, staff-run effort. The, our safety committee had done a survey in the fall of last year, gauging interest from, from staff on a variety of topics, including, you know, a lot of it was safety-related. But also part of it was, is there an interest in the county doing more to promote employee wellness? And if so, are you interested in serving on a committee? We had a number of staff members who exhibited interest in that, and so we, we worked on putting that together. We kicked it off two weeks ago. It's, as I said, it's an employee-driven committee that's being led by Kirsten Langerman and Summer Roth from our Health and Human Services Department. The committee includes representatives from across the organization. And during the first meeting, I charged them with developing methods for engaging employees in their work beyond just surface-level activities. And they worked on developing an overall mission for their work. They've identified a desire to pursue wellness from a holistic perspective, exploring physical, mental, financial, and other forms of wellness. And the committee is going to have access to employee F S A funds, so flex spending account funds. If you don't use all of your flex spending account by the end of the year, it gets reverted back to the employer. We've worked with our auditor to determine what restrictions exist on that money. And they've told us it's employee dollars. We can use it for things that benefit employees. So the Wellness Committee will have access to those funds through my approval. And then they're gonna provide an annual report that outlines their objectives, outcomes, funds expended, and will present that to the county board. So that's where we're at with the Wellness Committee right now.
So just to, I think Supporting Hands, I think I mentioned.
And I have provided them with that information.
So they started something like this probably last year.
It was last year.
I had a personnel meeting last weekend. It's voluntary. And then I think they put, I don't know, so many dollars in. And then I think they put, I don't know, so many dollars into their HSA or something, if they complete it, and they'll talk to them about diet or exercise or financial, a lot of things. I think it's a really good thing, so I'm glad you're getting it off the ground. Is, are we getting a lot of interest? Do we know?
Um we have, I think, ten people who were interested in serving on the committee. And it, like I said, we kicked it off two weeks ago. Um I know they met again yesterday and are are continuing to work to develop what that mission is and how they want to start engaging with employees. I believe the first thing we're gonna do is kind of a kickoff with employees, hey, we exist, these are the things that we're looking to do. Um and so they're gonna do some sort of an event. So in addition to just promoting um wellness, it's also about engagement as well. Because, you know, part of being well at work is is being engaged with uh with your coworkers.
Good, I'm glad you're doing that, Andrew. Thank you.
Would this be a paid or a volunteer situation?
Volunteer. It's volunteer.
It's volunteer.
Anybody wants to be on this committee could.
Yeah, it's it's um like I said, it's staff-driven, so it's four staffs. We're not at this point looking for community member involvement, but we are. Um we're allowing them to do it during work time, so I guess it is paid in that sense that it's occurring here, but we're looking for volunteers. We're not assigning anyone to be part of it. We also talked about them developing a process for onboarding and offboarding individuals. At a certain point, people are gonna say, well, I've I think I've done what I can with this group and I need to focus on other things. Um or other people have an interest in stepping on and participating, so that's one of the things that they're gonna work on, is developing that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty proactive approach to business model.
Do we have to take action on that, or?
It's just for your information to let you know it's something that we're doing.
Thank you.
We are uh getting closer to closing on the purchase of the annex from the school district. We have, the school district will be approving the purchase agreement at their next meeting. As you recall, you adopted a resolution that provides me with authority to sign a purchase agreement when it's completed. We'll do that after they sign it, so we expect that will be done, and then we will promptly close on the property afterwards by the end of the month.
This has been a process.
It has been a long process, uh but, you know, we've been really grateful to be able to work with uh Emily Wood from Wood and Ru. She's been a fantastic partner, helping us move things along and identify the challenges and issues that the that need to be addressed as we go through this. And then, of course, the school district have been fantastic partners as we work with this as well.
Good, good.
The uh county offices are gonna be closed on February nineteenth in observance of President's Day. And that week, they'll be start delivering furniture over at the um Family Services Center for the Health and Human Services offices.
Are they catching up?
Uh yes.
I must tell you, after that tour, I decided I would get lost when I went back there. That is really interesting. Done that, I mean.
It is. I I would get lost pre-renovation.
Yeah.
And I think I've I have found.
I may have too then.
But yes, one of the things that we're working on right now is making sure that we have adequate signage in place, and so um working with um, you know, Walt putting together a package for us that we'll work with Ramsey Printing to get pricing on and have printed up, is expanding on the signage that was installed two years ago, um same style, but you know, with accurate information on there.
We also talked about um a more permanent type of sign out front that listed.
Yes, and I've talked with, I've talked with them about that as well, and um the plan is they're gonna put together a design proposal for us. Put together some options that the board will be able to take a look at, because of course, there's a wide range of what you could do, right? Everything from putting a piece of cardboard out there with a stick to um a really, there's a joke, I'm sorry.
Something of stolen.
Really robust monument sign that is lit or or is um electronic, and the cost of that range is drastically as well.
And and do we have to, I mean, so I think this part of the conversation came up when I was at Woodland.
Yes.
And how important walk-ins are. And how when they were located over here, they had a lot of walk-ins, and that's, so if it's visible that at least, are we gonna list every place or just the ones that?
That's part of the discussion that we will have to have, right? Because the size of it will determine what we can include on there, and it's all gonna be driven by cost as well. So uh what I've asked them to do is um allow us to have a discussion, looking at a few different options, kind of a range of of costs and a range of styles. And then we can narrow it down, put together a design and and get it built.
Okay.
Very good to get real busy if you put too much on.
Well, that's.
Lose the whole point of that.
I'm still curious as to how many miles of CAT five and CAT six.
We can, we can certainly get that information and.
I mean, remember when we walked through, you saw those big bundles of CAT five, the blue wire, and then the CAT six and.
Running wire.
Alright, and I appreciate integrity during that update. I don't know if it's a weekly update, but it's kinda nice to see where they're at, and I think the staff probably likes to know where you're at too.
Yes, it's intended to be bi-weekly, especially if you weren't there to make.
Exactly.
It's more valuable.
Yeah, exactly. For those of whom would miss such a particular tour, it was really valuable.
The intent of it is to be bi-weekly, and um we we've worked out a process where it could be more regularly bi-weekly. You'll start to see it every other week.
Thank you for that shot, Commissioner Schmidt.
My pleasure.
Yeah, exactly. With that said, let's uh have a committee committee update, and we'll start with Mister Schmidt. Pick him, pick on him right off the bat.
January nineteenth, we had AMC meeting in St. Paul. One of the the things that uh more relevant to us out here, um and that, there's been a lot of talk about rural ambulance service and stuff over the last year, and actually so much through public safety that um um the legislature has put forth a a work group to to study um ambulance services and all the different funding mechanisms and and management systems there that are they're having trouble with. So AMC is wanting to put together a work group as well, task force, if you will, to work with the legislature, which I'm probably gonna end up being on the way it sounded. So um that was one of the bigger items that came out of that discussion that day.
Do they discuss in that, you know, something personal to me, how where if someone is pronounced dead, that they don't just pull the ambulance over and do what they did with my dad?
Yeah.
That that is that in the works? Cause that was still a ridiculous moment.
I I don't know yet, but I I've had.
You know this.
I know exactly, cause I just had this conversation. It's a person, um can I use Frank as an example?
He doesn't care at this point. He always likes publicity, so.
Carrying on his.
This is the best I could do.
No. When somebody passed away and they had a Gold Cross intercept lined up at that time, because Watkins Am- Watkins ambulance is a basic life support. BLS, Gold Cross is advanced life support. When they intercepted, just off Highway fifteen on the way to St. Cloud, the ALS made the call that he was deceased. So they made that call. That then puts Watkins ambulance, they can't move. They're stuck until the coroner gets there to take the body. So they sat on the side of the road. I don't know how.
At least fifteen minutes.
Yeah, and I think you got lucky that it wasn't.
Yeah.
Couple hours.
Right.
I mean, it can be, like our corners, like in Eden Valley, you'll get, if we're waiting on a corner, it could be hour and a half, two hours before they get out of the cities, out to us, so. So those types of, there's there's just some really quirky rules and
So what's?
And funding mechanisms in there that are just
There's a lot of.
cumbersome and very uh inadequate.
They literally pulled off to the, just right on fifteen, right there, not wait till intersection, right there off the side, and it was actually a, it's a hazard. To wait till the coroner to come, and then they switch and move the body from the ambulance there to the other one.
Yeah, it is, uh there's a lot of talk about ambulance services in the area right now, so.
It's just ridiculous.
Funding mechanisms, if if you have, you know, cause a a deputy will call in a call and he'll say, you know, multiple injuries, well, they might send two or three ambulance service, and they probably put LifeLink in the air. Well, depending, LifeLink is supposed to be first in line, but you get quite frankly, you get ambulances arguing over who's taking a patient.
Because of funding, I would imagine.
Because the one that doesn't get the patient doesn't get paid.
Sure.
And then these ambulance services are running hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars in the red at end of the year for these types of, that's part of it, but I mean, it's it's messy. I mean, and not customer service friendly at all.
No, it isn't.
I mean, when people are at their most vulnerable, you know, their worst day, things are, so always trying, but anyway, that's.
Sorry to get off that, but I wanna make sure you did that. Does that really annoy our family?
And I don't know the the depth of this yet, or what, I haven't done anything with it, but that's gonna be something that's brought up this time, so. Um then we had a work session here. And other than that, I went to the Litchfield, the Public Utilities Commission hearing here in Litchfield, and I went next night in Kimball. Really big crowd at both. I think Kimball's might have been bigger than Litchfield's even, and and I didn't get to say for all of Kimball's, I'd leave a little early um on that one, but very well attended and sound like there was plenty of discussion at that one too, so. Um Emergency Services Board had that last week. Long time, uh president there, uh Jeff Jalinski, um stepped down because he's, this is his last, he's not gonna run for election either, so he stepped down as chair. And Dwayne Anderson from Canioi took chair, is the way we're gonna say it, so, and I'm still vice chair, but uh but uh so Dwayne walked us through that. Lot of, lot of, gonna be a lot of discussion with the legislature on funding mechanisms for emergency services again this this session, but at the same time, the state is figuring out, I don't think they have enough money to fund what they passed last year. Uh you know, so some of those things are either never gonna happen, or they're gonna go unfunded, mandated, so. So that was a lot of our discussion there, so, and that's all I had. The Saturday at Grove City Care, at being at Trinity, I'm sure we'll have their their Super Bowl, which is soup lunch-in. So if you're not doing nothing Saturday, ten o'clock, ten, eleven o'clock, come out and have some lunch and good eats in Grove City.
Alright.
Thanks Steve. Paul?
Okay. Been busy. We had a MAP uh meeting following our last commissioner meeting.
I had a red dot.
Steve was there and and Andrew was there also. We got to meet the new, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Andrew, the new public health educator. And his name was?
Jakuma.
Jakuma, yeah.
Man.
Seemed like a really nice.
Good memory.
And he was, he was definitely dialed in to wanting to learn his job and do it well. Wouldn't you agree with that comment? I mean, he was just.
No, he was, he was, he was good.
It was, it was kind of refreshing.
Prior to working here, he was a physician.
Oh.
Well, he was?
Oh, I didn't know that.
So he's.
And how long were we without that position? A while?
Gosh, probably nine, six to nine months.
Right.
So it was just, he was a nice, refreshing face, and and the fact that he had energy and was looking to do something was was really good. I I attended the um uh remote MCIT presentation on the open meeting law, uh found some some things there that were of interest. But um overall, uh for the most part, we do things just as we're supposed to.
Is that still, is that still open?
What?
Is that a video or what? I didn't.
I don't know if they recorded that or not. I don't recall if they said it was being recorded or not. You could look on the MCIT website. They might have have it. Um then we had CCT. Um it was good to hear that um our local CCT finally got two new buses of the many that are backlogged since twenty twenty. Uh they were able to retire two of them. One of which had in excess of three hundred and some thousand miles on it. The other one was getting very close to three hundred thousand. We have got our new van that was a grant from Prime West. And we actually, we have possession of it. We're waiting for it to be decalced um before we put it into use, and um that's gonna be a real, a great thing, because instead of running a bus a long distance, we're gonna be able to trans- transport someone who is in need of transportation to, let's say, Rochester.
With volunteer drivers.
With volunteer drivers. So it's, it's a really, uh it's a good setup.
They can use your bus, but still be a volunteer?
It's a minivan. It's a minivan. It's a minivan. Yep.
It was donated by Prime West. We got a grant from Prime West with the grant money that they.
Nice.
It's, it's really, it's it's a good thing. It's really gonna help a lot of folks. We have one in Wilmer already. Uh that's been there for a couple of years, I think, and uh they get a fair amount of miles every year. We did do one thing with this one, though. We made absolutely positively sure that we bought an extended warranty when we got it.
Oh.
Cause that's vehicle costs are.
Well, we were told by the state we couldn't use any of that money.
Right.
To repair, because they weren't involved in the, because of the way we got the minivan, so Paul said they'll just get a maintenance agreement, which was a good idea.
Yeah, so we did that, so we did that. We also, um we have some, and this where it it gets real complicated. We have some restricted funds, and we have some unrestricted funds, and so what we are doing is moving the unrestricted funds, about a million, five, somewhere in that area, two million, into a high-interest earning account. Those funds will be used for our share when we build the new building in uh Wilmer. So they're important funds, but gee, you know, that's, we're gonna draw some good interest on that, cause that building's at least two years out, so.
They are saying there's gonna be a drop in interest, perhaps twice.
We locked it up for one year, but still, we got in excess of five percent, so we were pleased with that. Uh CPT and uh Morris, um I am now the chair. Uh nobody else ran for it.
Congratulations.
Running on a post is the most fun.
George's run, it was always run.
But it's, it's, I think, and Andrew's on the software committee, and and he can agree with me on this, that that things have really started to come into line. It's much calmer, it's a much more for lack of a better term, it's starting to become a well-oiled machine. It's not there yet. But we have, but we have about two million, two million and seven hundred thousand uh is our current cash position, so we can weather some storms. We own our bu- we own our own building. Because we did some cybersecurity penetration tests and so forth, um we were very fortunate. Our insurance for cybersecurity, which is very, very important, cause it has all our county data uh in the county and twenty-four other counties, twenty-three other counties. We had a very, very small increase in our rate, because um we fixed all of our vulnerabilities, and that gave us a better rate. So that was pleasing. Then on Thursday of that week, um Meeker Cares put on a presentation uh at the hospital. It was suicide prevention. And I went there because part of that was a grant um funded by a grant from Prime West, and I just, I got invited, so I went. And they, the young gentleman who spoke there, um very moving, because um he told about his own personal experience where he and his wife had had a baby. The baby was, had brittle bone uh disease. And it was born alive. Most babies don't live through the uh birthing, lived about an hour afterwards and then died. And he and his wife just went into a deep, deep, dark hole. And he said that, you know, he said, people after a death care, and they're calling you and they're bringing you meals and so forth. He says, how long does that last? He said, two weeks. Two weeks, and then he said, we were on our own. And um he talked about sitting on the edge of his bed with the gun loaded.
Oh boy.
And all of that, and um what saved him was someone who thought they were so inundated with people coming over, and he didn't wanna bother him. The phone rang and he said, I don't know what made me answer it, but I did. And he said, I'm here today because of that. It was very, very good. Tina Shank um was a part of that. She did a fantastic job. And um then they gave everyone there some training on what to do if you think the situation, someone is in that situation. So it was well worth my time. Yeah, I was at the XL Energy thing. I sat next to Andrew and Steve was there and um one of my constituent, yeah, Julie was there too, yep. Uh one of my constituents from uh down in Danielson Township was there, and I had been with him when they had the the thing out at the county fairgrounds and so forth. And we heard the third different answer on the same question. And, cause I got up afterwards and I said to him, I said, that's different than the other two answers we got, wasn't it Russ? And he goes, yep. Third different answer. We weren't very, that had to do with the internet, and if that transmission line would block the
If it'll be a problem.
Wave. Yep. Prime West, and then I'll be done, Beth.
Okay.
Prime West was a, was a very interesting meeting. Um we approved a four hundred and eighty-one million dollar budget. And with that four hundred and eighty-one million dollar budget, um about a And with that four hundred and eighty-one million dollar budget, um, about a, um, net operating income projected of about ten million. For the following year, so, which is very good. Now, we're also being very, very cautious, because we know that DHS could change. How much they're giving us. Adam almost knows, and we could go the other direction, so it's a very cautious budget. Um, I know, uh, we start talking a half a billion dollars, it sounds like, wow, but, um, there are so many variables in play. But Jim Presbilla lines things up. He said, we factored in some expenses that'll be gone next year. Um, we looked at all of these things, and, and we bit the bullet on some things this year because we have the money. But, yeah, and we gotta remember that we are owners of that. Prime West is ours. Um, ours and twenty-four other, twenty-three other counties, and so, um, as we sat there and we watched, um. Commissioner Olson nod off and almost break his neck.
It was, uh. Those numbers, that's, I, I'm on finance, so I go at nine thirty and sit through them twice, so it's like.
But he was just, and he just. He'd come back forward numbers, and he'd be back. And everybody in the room sees him. Nobody has the courtesy to wake him up, so he doesn't do it anymore.
He'd finally get up and have a cookie.
At least he didn't poke.
Oh, that's it.
Well, I was gonna, you, you want the MRC for me, and I know, but the MRC is adding counties to our, I shouldn't say that. Counties are joining MRC, additional counties, so they're at thirty-four, I think, if they're up to thirty-eight right now.
Are they becoming more active, and you're happier with them?
Much, much better leadership.
Because there was a time.
About a year ago. Cause I know we were discussing not being.
Even eliminating our participation, membership.
Yeah, this, this, uh, Capitol Hill and Associates is.
They don't mess around. I mean, they're.
No, and they won't take any frivolous, we ain't gonna talk about stuff that don't matter, and, so they're doing much better job.
Big deal. Jules?
Can I go next? Okie doke. All right, um, our last reports were given on the sixteenth. The next day, then, on the seventeenth, I also participated in that MCIT open meeting law. It was a webinar. That was nicely done. I, I learned a few things. That was good. January eighteenth, then, I had the Pioneer Land Library meeting over in Wilmer. We had election of officers. Uh, we approved a budget, and, uh, the budget is in, is in very good shape. Financially, Pioneer Land is doing very well. Um, they requested a four percent increase from Meeker County. And we accommodated that. Primarily, those increases, of course, are wages and benefits for employees. There is a full complement of employees throughout the thirty-two libraries that make up Pioneer Land. And there are four Pioneer Land libraries in Meeker County. It's Cosmos, Grove City, Litchfield, and Dassel, so. Then, on the twenty-third, we had our regular board meeting. On the thirtieth, I also attended the XL. Powerline meeting out at the arena, which was a full house. That was good. Lots of folks attended. Then, on the thirty-first of January, I had the Meeker County Public Health, the local meeting here. It was our first meeting without Diane. Diane Winter has retired. So Lori Turning is now the coordinator for the local committee. We had election of officers, and Dr. Whitney Rents is, uh, she has agreed to be board president for another year. There is an opening on the health board. If you know of anyone interested, we'd love to have someone join us. We reviewed.
Candidate right out there.
Yes. What are you doing, Amy? What do you think? But, uh, yes, if you know someone, or if you yourself are interested, that would be wonderful. Uh, we updated bylaws and reviewed policy documents. Staffing is looking good. We also welcomed the new health educator, and the transition to health and human services is going well. Uh, they're going over position descriptions, responsibilities. Those things are being figured out. Uh, the remodel is going well. Uh, Lori said we're packing boxes and moving things and. Uh, working their way through the construction process. The three-county public health meeting will be Thursday now. Am I right on that? The eighth? Think that's in Hutchinson. Then, this afternoon, we have at one thirty our township meetings in the basement. And tomorrow at two o'clock, I have the aquatic invasive specie meeting. That'll be here in the boardroom, and I believe that's my report.
You're a week off on that AIS meeting, it's the fourteenth.
Don't come too soon, there won't be anybody here. I had a busy week, so I'm gonna try to keep this short.
I'm gonna double check on that, Paul.
So Woodland, we had a retreat. That was interesting. Missed you, Danny.
I know.
Um, it really was, I, you know, I, I said this before, but I get in the morning, and I'm like, a retreat, and then every time I go, I, I appreciate it. We talked about what our board should start looking like, and different things.
I can think of it's all the Catholic retreats I went to.
Yeah, I know, this is different.
Oh, my god.
Everything goes back to Catholicism with you. So, it really was interesting, and I think they're scheduling another one for me.
Okay.
So, we, I had a CHB exec meeting. We went over budgets, and also there is a, they have a new grant out. Um, it's rather large. They're trying to get back to the foundational business of, uh, public health. And there's some discussion about, they wanna hire somebody, kind of for a community health plan, or as well as dad and some things. So that's gonna be probably a pretty large discussion at our regular board meeting. Um, there's different thing, I mean, although the grant is confined to certain things, there can be other things done with it. So that discussion is still out, um, I also had a Supporting Hands meeting. Which I love Supporting Hands. Um, their outcomes are now very apparent, uh, the differences that they've made. In healthcare for people, people seeking mental health, people getting to work and being homeowners. It's a very well-funded program, because it has such good outcomes. So, um, we discussed budgets there too, and there was a, a short film that we watched. That I'm, I'm asked, uh, Andrew to get and maybe show at a work session. It really explains Supporting Hands, and, and, uh. The older I get, the more I cry, so, it's, I was like, it was pretty good.
How long did you cry?
I didn't, I just, things.
I had like a little elaboration on that.
Exactly. It's like the rings of a tree. How long does Beth cry?
But you hear somebody on there say, you know, I, I came to this country, you know, they were, their parents were. Picking whatever they did, you know, and they had to have a, had a baby, and they had no family around, and Supporting Hands found them, and. Meantime, they got them all the help that they needed, and now they're married and homeowners, and, I mean, it's, it, it kinda is, it makes you a pretty, it touches you. And I'm pretty conservative, but it's, it's a program that works, that I very much support, so. Then we had, what, are you making fun of me? By the way.
Trying to get you to cry.
It's, you guys are so mean to me, you can't even. I know. By the way, Amy, I believe, was on the ground floor of Prime West. Were you not, Amy?
Yes, I'm one of the founding members.
Yes, and thank you. That is a wonderful, wonderful organization. We're still always fighting DHS, but it's okay.
Well, nothing has changed.
No. But I also, I also, I attended finance, and, um, they're doing well financially. They're a little worried about the court case. And, and things can change. I mean, we had one case in Wisconsin of a baby that was the only place they could get care. And if you don't have a contract, it can end up costing you a lot of money, but we get through it. But when it sounds like they have a lot and lot of money, they do, but things, one case can cost you a lot of money, so.
Should talk a little bit about karma too.
Karma, yeah. Did you, I can't, now you're gonna ask me the initials, what they stand for. Hold on.
County Administered Rural Medical Assistance.
Yeah, okay, so that's.
Real karma then.
No, it's the partnership they're trying to form, so we don't end up with all these RFPs all the time and rewriting, you know, to. Cause this has been a problem for years, I think, so they're just trying to find a good answer.
In Prime, uh, Prime, wasn't there a email here in the last couple of weeks about? And maybe I missed it near cover, but aren't they, they're acting up again against them, right?
DHS?
Yeah.
You know, Jim has a, a special way of handling them, but rural health, um, is different than. A health, you know, county health purchasing, for some reason, they don't quite understand why it works so well, I think, and that's part of the issue. But I think they're closer now than they have. I think something hopefully is gonna be worked out here.
Or maybe that was with the peep, so what was that?
Or was that about?
Oh, yeah.
That was about.
But it wasn't necessarily favorable.
Correct.
Well.
Or just Prime Health, right?
Well, Prime, remember now.
Prime Health, Prime West.
Prime West.
Prime Health was, yeah, that's different, so. Prime, Prime West has our county base purchase.
I knew I was reading something.
What else did I do?
Read too much.
Yep.
I had a meeting about, um, a hous- a housing development meeting about the structure that we're talking about putting over on hospital property. Paul was at that also. It was informative. The, the lumber one was there, as well as the investor. So, um, somebody from their planning and zoning was there from the city, uh, the city administrator, uh, Lisa was there. So it was interesting, and we'll see where it goes. I think it's a great project if they can get it through. Uh, uh, it's really a nice apartment. It's got some amenities. I think the rent is gonna be reasonable. It's not low income, but it's reasonable rent. I mean, for a two-bedroom, I think the highest is twelve hundred a month.
Fourteen hundred for the big one.
It's got underground parking. It's like a lot of these that they've put up around. The size of the lot may be an issue, so. More to come on that. They're gonna present to the hospital board, uh, at the next hospital.
Two-story?
So.
We will be talking about it here at our work session.
Right, so I, and that's right, I forgot that. I'm probably not gonna be in attendance, but, and I think the investor and lumber one are coming, right? As well as Lisa?
That's what we're looking to schedule.
Yeah, so hopefully we can get that.
Is that this work session, the twenty-seventh then?
Yeah, because, because the funding came out, and they have to have, when, when do they have to have?
April thirtieth is the deadline to go to MRS.
It's kinda moving in along.
It's a twelve million dollar project.
Yeah.
Be done right here. Sixty years.
Yeah, I couldn't believe.
Yeah.
Do you ever go to Wilmer?
Not very often.
They just put one up in Wilmer, putting one up in Melrose, I don't, let's.
No, but, but, yeah, I forgot. We're having a work session on it, so, but we had, then I had law library. Like I said, I had a busy week. Um, I don't know, go over that law library. It was a special meeting, because the state, go ahead.
So, the, the state is, the state's law librarian has recommended changes to the structure of law libraries across the state. Law libraries are required by statutes. Counties have to have them, but counties run them. They're funded through fees that are collected. Um, at.
At the court.
At the courts. So we get about twenty-four to twenty-six thousand dollars a year to fund our law library, and it fully funds it, right? It's, it's a self-stating effort. Um, there's concern from the state about the fact that law libraries are operated differently across the state. Some provide significantly greater services than others, um, and so that's, that's where this effort is kind of coming from. The state's judicial council, which is the, the governing body of the judicial branch, um. Took a look at the proposal and said, well, before we take this to the legislature, let's take a step back and, and recommend that they do a working group instead. Um, and, and just kinda study this and come forward with a proposal if there's a desire to change anything. There's a range of options, leave it the same, to all the way that the state fully takes it over, or somewhere in between. We're concerned about anywhere that there is, um, kind of infringement on local control, especially if we still have a role in it. But then the state is taking a greater role, and it takes that money.
So you're gonna be looking at an unfunded mandate again, so Judge Beckman.
Yes.
Is, not to interrupt you, but she got on that committee, cause she.
Yep.
Her antenna went up about it, like, cause we are not the same as they are down there. So that's kind of what the dis-. Cause usually we only meet once a year.
That was a big part of the discussion, um, and so we don't know exactly what the proposals will look like, if it gets to the legislature, when it gets to the legislature. But it's an area that we're keeping an eye on, um, and, you know, ultimately, if this was something that the state fully took over. And fully funds, like court administration, then that's probably fine, right? But when it's that hybrid approach of the state's doing some of it, we're doing some of it, that's where we run into the risk of, well, the state chipping away at the. The money that we receive, or requiring more services than the money can c- cover, so that's.
And every county has their own.
Sure, we have one right downstairs.
There's actually not quite every county. What we learned was there's eighty-one law libraries across the state, some of them have joint.
Right, they have joint.
Yes.
I see, okay.
But the concern is, you know, are they gonna want somebody to be there all the time? And then, okay, if the, if the state takes it over, that's fine, but then. When the political wind changes, then what?
Yes.
So Judge Beckman, you know, like I said, her antenna went up, she got on the committee, so we will see. Cory, right now, you kinda, what, what did we have for traffic in there last year?
Nine visits.
Nine visits, but maybe that, you know.
And the visitors are other lawyers, correct?
They can be, or, or, or somebody who has to go to court for something.
Okay. One of the services that the law library provides is access to, uh, Westlaw, we use right now.
Right.
It's an online database to get, um, you know, case law history, and, uh, it's, it's made free to the public to be able to use. So oftentimes attorneys have their own access to it, because they're using it on a daily basis. They don't have as much of a need for that, but for the public, it's a, it's a nice service to be able to provide. So one of the questions is, do people know that this is a service that they can use? Is that one of the reasons why we see more use? Is it not particularly, um, easy for people to use? So we actually, as part of that discussion. The law library board decided, we have a contract with the state where they provide us with certain services, right? The, there's a tier one and a tier two service. We were tier one, costs like three hundred dollars a year. Tier two costs about eight hundred dollars a year, based on the revenue that we receive. They switched to tier two, which provides some additional services to the law library board, but also provides a, a reference desk. That people can call from the law library to get questions.
Nice.
So we're gonna see if that helps the, um, level of service that people are having, and if that improves the, the use, and then we'll make a determination down the road. Whether or not it makes sense to continue to pay.
And you know what the, nowadays, you can find so much online that, is it ever gonna be, I don't know, whatever. I mean, obviously, our traffic is down, right? It just keeps going down every year, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a broader problem that, you know, Julie, as you see at the library board, that libraries face in general. And, you know, certainly, public libraries have more of an opportunity to take proactive efforts to get people in there. This is a really passive effort.
I'm gonna tell you about libraries, though I don't go in them very often, but I have a gal that, that stays with me some on the weekend, and she loves to read. So I, I took her down there, and there was actually families in there reading, kids in there gathered, and it was kinda refreshing to see, so I'm thinking, well, maybe. Maybe people are coming back to the library, right?
Yep, they are, and, and there's more of an effort to have things at our, even our little, little libraries out here. Uh, that in, involve, of course, children, get them started at a younger age, get them reading, and, yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, we used to hang out there to meet boys, but that was back in the day. Way back in the day. That's all I had, thanks, buddy.
You don't wanna elaborate on that one.
Yeah, exactly.
It was a social gathering place.
And that's why I didn't get dates now. They're all at the library.
Didn't you hang out at the library? Oh, I'm old.
Bookmobile.
Bookmobile, see.
Things are adding up. I knew it wasn't my.
Are you ready for a recess?
No, we got one. That would be done.
Ready for a recess? We did have Woodlands right before the retreat, too.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I think I'm still under gag order. You can always elaborate on that one.
We had election of officers.
Oh, yeah, and you were somehow re-elected again, right?
Congratulations to that.
Exactly, she was nominated.
Did some budget stuff, and, um.
Little stuff going on there.
Yeah.
And one thing I was gonna ask, if you're gonna do this for a work session, I thought was kinda concerning, is this assistant attorney thing? This wage?
Oh.
I mean, I can see that becoming a real problem quick.
So.
McLeod has changed that drastically. Forty-five percent, wasn't it?
That was the, the county attorney.
Right. And they've upped their assistant county attorney wages.
I heard about that at Prime West Finance.
Because of the. Because of the, the public defender negotiation that occurred. So.
So what's our concern?
Well, our, our, the concern, of course, is always that we have competitive enough wages, and what we've seen is that, um, what McLeod had done. With drastically increasing their wages for assistant county attorneys, is that going to put us in a tuss- spot where it's tough to fill our open positions? And we've seen that our one vacant assistant county attorney position's been very difficult to fill. Um, we will, uh, we are starting, we actually had a kickoff meeting yesterday with, um, Tessa from DDA. On our, our ongoing maintenance program for our class and comp system, and so part of that is going to be, they're gonna be taking a look at the market. As a whole, across the entire organization, and providing a recommendation to class and comp which positions we take a look. As a whole across the entire organization and providing a recommendation to class and comp of which positions we take a look, so.
Okay.
So this is out of the realm of what they would have done anyway, so this is just a special look?
No, this is.
Cause this is part of our main.
This is part of the program.
Ongoing maintenance, but the concern is with the public defender is getting so much, we might not, you know, we won't be competitive.
And that's been an issue to fill anyway.
And it was an issue before that.
All right, with that said, I think we'll adjourn till one thirty.
Don't you have any reports?
I just did it.
That was it? Lord, no wonder I'm so busy.
Yes, we were in a recess, not adjourned.
Mister Chair, I'll move to recess.
Second by Steve, second by Julie, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.